Okay, at 6:30 we'll call to order the meeting of the City Commission. First thing on our agenda would be invocation. I understand Chief Kurt Zeeman will lead us in invocation.
Please bow with me. Lord, thank you for bringing us together as a city, a community tonight. Allow us to make good decisions for everybody involved in the city of El Dorado. Thanks for the needed rain and all the blessings you give us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
We have pledged allegiance. We have the Youth Commission here tonight that has volunteered to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Oh, no. No, no. You come up here and do it.
Come on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you to the Youth Commission for leading us that, and they're going to give us a presentation a little bit later, so thanks. First thing we have are, we have two proclamations. First proclamation we have is for Police Week, so fitting that Chief Zeeman led us with invocation. Thank you for doing that. Proclamation, whereas the Congress of the United States has designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas our law enforcement officers are the guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be a free man, warriors of the battle against crime, and are dedicated to the preservation of life and property, and whereas our community desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of its own police officers, now therefore be it resolved that I, Vince Haynes, Mayor of the City of El Dorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through 21, 2016, as Police Week. Police Week in the City of El Dorado, and I urge all citizens to support efforts, to make every effort to express our appreciation to these men and women who are willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary to guard us, our loved ones, against all who would violate the law. In witness thereof, I here to set my hand and cause the official seal of the El Dorado of Kansas be affixed this 16th day of May. So, I would like to say thank you, everything, to the Police Department and all the work they do, and I know that, a dedicated group, so thanks. The other proclamation we have in conjunction would be Public Works Week. Brad, thanks for joining us tonight. Proclamation, whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the safety, health, and well-being of this community is greatly dependent upon the vital services and facilities provided by our Public Works Department, and whereas the support and understanding of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, highways, public buildings, animal control, and solid waste collection, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities and services are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of Public Works employees, now I therefore be it resolved, now therefore be it resolved, that I, Vince Haynes, Mayor of the City of El Dorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through 21, 2016, as Public Works Week. Public Works Week in the City of El Dorado, and I urge all citizens to acquaint themselves with the issues involving when providing our public work services and to recognize the contributions which Public Works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness thereof, I here to set my hand and cause the official seal of the El Dorado of Kansas to be affixed this 16th day of May, 2016. So, thank you to Brad and the Public Works Department for all that you do throughout the year very much. Personal appearances, we have the Youth Commission here to present.
Evening. My name is Sean Leers. I am a junior this year at El Dorado High School, and I live at 1859 Longview. I represent the Youth Commission tonight as the chairman. Pursuant to the El Dorado Youth Commission bylaws, the El Dorado Youth Commission files this annual report of the past year's activities. I would consider this to be a successful year, and to get to where we are, we have a number of people who help us. We would like to thank the City Commission for allowing the youth of El Dorado an opportunity to voice their opinions and learn about city government through the El Dorado Youth Commission. We'd also like to thank our advisor, Mr. Jim Gardner, for 15 high school students participating in Youth Commission this year, and our agenda always includes a report of the City Commission meeting, what is going on in El Dorado and youth issues. We have enjoyed working with our city staff, and we would like to give a special thanks to Commissioner Locke. He attends our meetings, explains actions of the City Commission, and answers questions, and honestly, he's as much of a role model as Mr. Gardner is. Some highlights from this year, we participated with the Fall Festival with our Buckets and Ball Game. We gave away ice pops as prizes, and the event was very well received as all of the kids were winners. We also participated in Kids Fest with the Bucket and Ball Game. We gave each child a chance for drawing for a soccer ball. We worked to develop a new way to provide the public with the fireworks regulations. Every household will be sent a mailer of fireworks regulations on the front and Parks and Recreation information on the back, and a phone number for fireworks complaints will be included, and this should help to limit the number of 911 calls that are not emergencies. Kevin Wishard explained the Parks and Recreation Master Plan at one of our meetings, and a number of us completed the survey that went along with that in the past year, and the El Dorado Youth Commission looks forward to working with you all next year. Thank you.
Good job, Sean.
Before you go, Sean, thank you for that report. Any questions?
No, but I'll point out, to give them a little extra credit here, they meet a lot. Every other Monday night that we're not meeting, they're meeting, so they meet at least twice a month as well, which, for busy high school schedules, is a pretty big commitment, so kudos to all of you and a good year. And Mr. Gardner. Mr. Gardner does an incredible job trying to keep them in line.[503.62][503.62](laughter) It's a constant work and effort between the two of us.
We appreciate his patience. Sometimes we definitely need a little bit of order there.
They're a good group of kids, all of them.
So how many of your group are seniors or won't be on the Youth Commission?
Uh, we have two seniors.
Could we ask them all to come up and kind of introduce themselves and say a little bit about why you liked it, what was good about it?
This is my third year with Commission. I like this because, well, with debate and forensics, I did different research studies with politics, and this is kind of a chance to see it up close. I find it really interesting just seeing it work within our own town.
I'm Clarice Bowlin. I'm a senior this year, and I just have really enjoyed working with Chase and Mr. Gardner.
How many years have you done this, real quick? Yeah, she's done it all.
Four years.
I thought it was all four.
My name is Hannah Brock. I'm a junior, and this is my third year on the Youth Commission.
My name is Lauren Lowery. I'm a sophomore. This is my second year I've been on it, and I just like knowing what's going on in the town.
Ah, good.
I'm Justin Jones. I'm a sophomore. I've been doing it two years, and I like, you know, getting the joy of helping, seeing the kids smile, like when you help them out with the games, and like helping our community out.
My name is Gretchen Shum. I'm a sophomore, and this is my second year of Youth Commission, and I just really like hearing what's going on around the town.
My name is Abigail Edwards. I am a sophomore, and this is my second year, and I really enjoy being able to experience this with everyone.
My name is Hannah Hawrey. I'm a junior, and this is my third year, and I just like knowing what's going on around El Dorado.
Okay. Well, thank you. You guys have any special projects coming up for the year?
We, well, obviously, the school year, there's a handful. We have some others that are on the Youth Commission but are gone just due to year-end activities, but we won't be meeting for the summer. We'll be kind of regrouping. They're about to have kind of their year-end celebration with the Gardeners, and from there we'll regroup and then get going again with the new school year. But we just recently, we kind of ended the last project we did that I don't know if we mentioned was, you know, they surveyed students and folks at the high school and some middle school age about a potential business that could be appealing to young people, and so they got some feedback with that, and, you know, we provided that information to the person who had some interest, and they're available for that, and so I would encourage anybody, you know, that has any need or needs assistance where getting a voice from young people who benefit, to let us know that we're always open to projects and new experiences to get in front of them.
Well, and I would say thank you for your work over the year. I appreciate everything you've done, and I really appreciate your efforts here. Hopefully, we can make some differences during our Fourth of July celebration time. Appreciate you taking that on. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be State of the Department from Brad Meyer for Public Works Personal Appearances.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm here to give you the state of the Public Works Department. We do this, each department head does this, so that you guys can all kind of keep up to date and up to speed on what's going on, so it's kind of fitting that it happened to be during APWA, during Public Works Week as well. So, I'll get started. Up there on the screen right now that you see is our, kind of our motto, or, we try to do, lots of times people don't understand what goes on in city government, and so when they see something, they don't always know if it's right. It may not be the way they would do it, or their business does it, or however it's done. So, this just talks about us providing service to citizens and to the community at a reasonable rate and at reasonable costs. So this is probably one of the, for people that aren't in municipal service, probably the biggest question that I get asked when you say, "You're the Director of Public Works," and they say, "What does Public Works do?" Because everybody knows what the Police Department does, and everybody knows what the Fire Department does, and the water guys make sure you have water, but there's this group that you don't know what they do. I'm not going to read it to you word for word, but it talks about streets, it talks about stormwater infrastructure, right down to building janitorial, to IT, to all. Now, I'm going to stop here because there's going to be a test at the end of this, so I want you guys to think clearly, and I want you to listen very carefully, and then we'll see how many of you pass the test at the end. I did that specifically for you, Commissioner Wilkinson.
Thank you.
Thirty-three full-time positions and six to eight depending part-time positions. That's kind of hard to read, I understand, and, but the one thing that you will see is you'll see five red dots on there. Those are open positions, and so as I see our Youth Commission here, we'd like to get as many, as many people as we can to fill those positions, and a lot of times, we get really good ideas from new hires, from new folks that come in and they see a process and they go, "Why do you do it like this?" And so it's always interesting to bring on new people and kind of take them, because a lot of times you get stuck in a rut when you do things. But thirty-three full-time positions, this slide will be key to the test. Operations within our department, obviously, Public Works, major streets, stormwater, sanitation, trash pickup and recycle, animal control, airport, central maintenance, garage, building maintenance, and IT. Building maintenance is one that's kind of a daunting task because it's all of our municipal buildings, and so it's lots and lots of different systems. Just to name a few, some of the things that we get lots of comments and we talk about a lot out in the public, mosquito spraying, our city dump truck program, spring cleanup, fall cleanup, and street striping for painting road markings on our streets. That was a, that, the one in the upper right-hand corner was kind of an interesting project because the guys had never done anything like that. It wasn't normal, and it was kind of one of those that got thrown at us and said, "Make this work," and so the guys did a great job on that one to make that happen. The one on the left will cause Dylans to go into a panic. Street pre-treating, when we come out and put the lines in the street, Dylans get really busy because people get worried that the roads are going to get bad. Tornado siren and monthly maintenance, absolutely crucial to the citizens in our community to make sure that when, especially this time of year, that when and if inclement weather should hit and we should have to sound those sirens if they work. Snow plowing, always fun. The one in the middle is out at the airport, lots of open area to get to, go out and plow at the airport. You'll see in the picture on the right, you'll see what we call gang plowing, and lots of times there will be five or six different trucks out doing that. Not going to have to worry about that for a few months, but it's very common for us to have five or six trucks out on major thoroughfares doing it all at once, so we get done and we get off the road so that traffic isn't, we don't impede traffic very often. And then finally, storm cleanup this time of year, another big deal. I don't know if you can see very well, but there's a little yellow dot right in the middle of that big tree. That is an employee. That's how big the tree was that was laying across Second Street, I believe, at High. We come up on those lots of times. That sort of work is, that's not from eight to five. That's well after five o'clock when everybody's gone home, so those guys are out doing that work day in, day out, morning, noon, and night. Crack ceiling, curb and gutter, concrete work. The picture in the lower right is a recent picture of the new bike path being put in out on 12th Street, and then signal replacements at Main and Central. All sorts of different things that have to do with that, with different signals and with different intersections come different challenges. That was a knockdown from a truck being off route, and then it was replaced and put back up, so there was a new signal at that intersection. Stormwater, this is one of those projects during budget time that I, when I talk to you guys about it, that we don't always, you aren't always able to see work that's done. A lot of times work is done in places that you can't see. These two projects, again, another one that after storms, we get lots of conversations about. The top three are at the bike path off Prairie Trails off of 12th Street, and there was lots of stormwater work to be done in that area to make sure that the bike path went across that waterway safely. The bottom one is cleaning up the East River Bridge. When material gets caught up in the head wall down there at the dam, and, so that was probably a day or so worth of work pulling each one out, each one at a time, and cleaning that up, so both pretty big projects. Sanitation and recycle department, both of which here over the course of the next thirty days are going to take on a kind of a new look. We're changing our process and how we collect trash and how we collect recyclables. Arrived today is the truck in the upper left-hand corner. That truck is called a split-body truck. It'll actually pick up trash and recycle in the same truck, and so it will reduce a vehicle on the street and hopefully continue to make that department more efficient as we go. We do offer full roll-off service for construction and for contractors, as well as residential folks as well. Animal control and animal shelter, all I can say about these guys is these are probably two of the most caring individuals that we've got. It's kind of a daunting task to take in all these animals and know when you take them in that they may not be leaving in the same condition that they came in, that they may end up being euthanized, and so Donna does lots and lots of work to make sure that those animals that are able to be rehomed do so, and we get those out, whether we use rescues, various other adoption methods that we have for folks that can take care of that. Our animal licensing numbers are up and have been each year that Jay Marshall has worked for us. Jay has kind of taken that and run with it, and we're up by probably four, 500 licenses over the course of the years, so lots of work. I will point out that in the picture in the lower left-hand corner, your code enforcement officer did that mural on the wall in there. I know it's kind of hard to see maybe from where you're at, but I'd encourage you to go down and take a look at that. There's a lot of hard work in that, so. The airport, excuse me, the airport, just, it amazes me all the time that an airport our size gets the amount of traffic that ours gets, that it gets. These are IFR maps that show the number of flights originating and coming into El Dorado. Now, the one in the upper right, upper left-hand corner, sorry, is from 2010 to 2015, and I was, it was kind of funny, where are people that use the airport going? And by that map, everywhere. Those flights all originated from EQA and ended up going as far as all four corners and everywhere in between, so lots and lots of flights coming in and out of the airport. Now, I'll go through this quickly. When Caleb started in 2010, there were 29 airplanes based at the airport. Today, there's 43 airplanes based at the airport. We have since added T-hangers, and we had two community hangers. The airport totals about 220 acres. Another question that I get asked all the time is, "How long are the runways?" Runway 422 is 4,204, and runway 1533, which is a north-south runway, is 4,200. The airport has an AWAS system, an Automated Weather Observation System, that lets pilots see what the weather in El Dorado is rather than calling up Jabara or Midcom, because we all know that just because it's cloudy and rainy in Wichita doesn't mean it's cloudy and rainy in El Dorado, Kansas. We have, we have four businesses out of the airport, but we have lots of others that come through the airport and buy fuel from us and base during special seasons out there. Peterson Performance, we have two or three aerial applicators, we have flight draining, and we have a couple of pipeline companies that fly out of the airport. Fuel sales for those years, you can see those on there, a 48% increase in fuel since 2010. Now, the last one is where it never ceases to amaze me. On an average day, the airport sees between 10 and 15 operations. That may be touching goes, that may be actual landings, et cetera, et cetera, but on the more active days, which it seems to me there's more active days than there are easygoing days, there's upwards of 40, touch 40 different operations at the airport, so there's lots of folks coming and going at the airport. Just quick three, building maintenance. I kind of already touched on Kevin. IT, that's our tower out back. You see lots of little white dots on it. You'll probably see a lot more little white dots. Each one of those dishes is beaming, if you will, signals to different buildings of ours so that we're all interconnected through this building here, so as we continue to tie buildings together, you'll probably see more and more of those. Central maintenance garage, I can't tell you how much money the city probably saves by having its own maintenance garage so that things aren't sent out. They are fixed and worked on in-house so we don't pay outside shop labor to have vehicles worked on. This is kind of one of the proud ones. When we talk about not working in silos, not being individual departments, oh, everybody plays for the same team. The picture in the upper left-hand corner is work that Public Works did, and Engineering did, and Water did out at Fire Station Number Two in preparation for their training facility that's out back. Scott's guys had a big role in, A, getting the holes drilled for us and then laying everything out to make sure everything's in the right spot. The Water Department brought in their water service for out there, extended the line, the service line, and brought in the hydrant for out there. Public Works guys finished off the top and poured concrete on those pads. So, three departments or four departments right there, all in one, working together to make sure this project takes off and goes. Picture on the, in the right is actually a repurposed truck in Public Works from the Fire Department. It actually has our weed sprayer on the back, which also doubles as a fire squad. So, the spring when we had wildland fire after wildland fire after wildland fire, we didn't see that truck much. It lived back over here at the Fire Department for lots of, for lots and lots of days, along with a pumper that we've got to use to spray brine with, and we haul water with as we need to during the summertime. They were using it as a pumper truck when it came time to actually need it. And the bottom one is a picture of our Reclamite program. Lots of cities just do a turnkey on Reclamite and things like that. We went, several years ago, we went to the vendor and said, "Hey, we have got to maintain our costs. We've got to keep costs reasonable. What can we do to help?" So, part of what we do is we do the, we do the sand application, we do the signage, and we do the sweeping afterwards. That cuts down our costs because our guys are already working, and so therefore we don't have to pay their guys to do the same work that our guys are perfectly capable of doing, so we're constantly looking for ways to become more efficient and utilize what we have. All of that being said, what was the common denominator in all of that?
You.
You.
No.
It's right there on the screen.
Employees.
Our employees. I think, not just in Public Works, I think over the last 22 years of being here, I think that after, after working with the guys, whether it's in the Police Department, or the Water Department, or Sewer Department, Trash Department, doesn't matter who it is, our biggest asset is our employees. We have got probably the most caring employees, aren't afraid to stay late, aren't afraid to come in early, want to get the job done, and that goes throughout, that goes throughout the entire city. That's not just, that's not just in Public Works. That's everybody from administration right down to the lowest-paid pothole patcher that we've got, and I think it all happens from the leadership that we have at the city. I think each department head wants the best, and I think that's the expectation as it's passed down to our employees. So, I'll answer any questions that you have, if you have any.
Is that going on the webpage?
It certainly can.
Oh, I think it should.
I think, I don't know if all of them have or not, but it absolutely can.
I think we asked for the other ones to go on Water and Police to be placed on the website, so I think I'd like to see that report placed on our website with the rest of them. Okay.
Thanks, Brad.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay. That's what we have for personal appearances. Next on our agenda is public comments. Anybody from the [inaudible] to address the Commissioner? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to consent agenda. Everybody's packed, if they got minutes and appropriations. Do I have any questions or comments about the consent agenda? If there are none, I entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second. Okay. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Motion carries five to zero. Next thing on our agenda is, uh, application for special use permit to allow accessory structure at 701 Random Road, uh, case number 16001. I think this is an action that the Planning Commission placed, um, earlier, earlier this month. I guess, no, it was last month that they made this action.
28th of April.
28th of April. Public hearing was held at the Planning Commission, so I, I don't, we wouldn't be having a public hearing here, uh, tonight. Any, any questions or comments from the commission on this item? Or has that chance to look at it and review it? Right? We're comfortable with it? Okay, well, I entertain a motion then.
What's ordinance number?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve case number 16 dash 001 dash SUP, request an especially use permit to allow 1,500 square foot accessory structure in an R1 low-density residential district, and that ordinance number G1217 be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? We'll move to roll call.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haines?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Okay. Next thing on our agenda would be to application to rezone 11237 and 1239 West Central Avenue from R1 Low Density Residential District to C1 Central Business. This particular item, we have seen up here before, we've had some discussion on, and we sent it back to the Planning Commission, came to us the first time as a 3-3 tie, and left our commission as a 2-2 tie, so we sent it back for them to, to talk about it some more, and it's back to us with a 4-3 vote to deny the, uh, the zoning change. What's interesting about this topic is that we, the staff still, staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission has denied the zoning change. So, I think, uh, the Planning Commission, I, uh, certainly entertained additional comments from the, from all parties at that time, and I know we've got some letters in our packet. I think we have talked about this once, uh, to the, to quite a bit. I don't know whether, unless the commission wants to have some more public discussion about this, I don't intend to, to do that, but I will follow the will of the commission.
The only thing I need to do is I need to apologize to the people on Poplar Street, because I said something about their homes, you know, the conditions of their homes, homes, and race homes, and the neighborhood is, they're compatible, they're both fine. I shouldn't have said what I said about it.
Any other comments or discussion from the commission on this topic? It's, it's before us to, uh, approve or deny, or approve, the Planning Commission's, uphold the Planning Commission's decision, or takes a supermajority, which should be four of the five, correct, Herb?
Correct.
For us to overturn this decision by the Planning Commission.
I'd always say that, uh, if, uh, I, I understand the property, they don't have a buyer at this time, but, you know, I mean, if, if they get a buyer in the future, that has a, an actual use, something they want to put in there, at that point, they could, uh, come back and apply again. Is that correct, Scott?
Correct.
That's, that's the mindset I'm under, is if the property available currently was, you know, if there was interest in being bought up, then, you know.
I think I'd, I'd like to see more of maybe what someone had planned to put in there and let the, let the property owners around, you know, kind of see that, and maybe they, maybe they be more.
Can I add a caveat?
Sure.
I understand that, and that's quite normal, but I will remind the commission that if you approve this today or in the future, you get a whole list of, of what you can do with it. So, if someone came to you and asked for a rezone, put in a barber shop, the minute you rezone it, it can be anything in C1, and that's a long list. And it, and it, just so everybody knows, it's most businesses, most normal businesses are allowed in, in C1. It's our most general business, and in fact, that's its label, and it's got general business. Yeah, so, um, it's, it, it, today or in the future, it really doesn't change what's allowed, even if they come to you with plans. And, and I think that was one of the things, um, that the Planning Commission is that today's question is about land use, and what's allowed and what's not. And so, today it's residential, and if, whenever, if it ever gets changed, it'll be something different. What it looks like is a discussion for another day, and it's a site plan review, and you have regulations that, that dictate that, and I think you all talked about that the last time you, you visited, that there's screening is already required. So, any commercial application, there's some screening, and, and that's a, a land use, that's a site plan type issue, and then the type of businesses, again, back to the specifics of C1, so, or, yeah, C1, so, um, what they're going to do is, is a discussion for another day. But nothing compels you to do it today either, so. And I think that's why staff has recommended approval, because it's just the use, and as you look around, Central is heavily business oriented.
Well, I guess I would, I'm gonna, I'm gonna weigh in and say that I don't, I don't agree with this, I don't agree that it was denied, I don't think it followed sound planning decisions, in my opinion. Um, it's contiguous with sites, and I don't think it sent a very good message, uh, to, to our central business corridor, uh, and what we've lot, what got left with are two very dilapidated homes on a very public street. And contrary to popular belief, uh, I don't believe there are very many lots, per se, at law in Central. Certainly lots large enough to, to, to do anything with. So, for me, I'm disappointed in this, but the Planning Commission has heard it twice, and, um, it's now before the City Commission. So, without any further discussion or comments, I would entertain a motion.
I move to deny case number 16002 REZ, requesting a rezoning of 1237 and 1239 West Central Avenue, El Dorado, Kansas.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Let's go through roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haines?
No.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries forward. Hold on a minute. Motion carries to deny, so it will stay as an R1 zone. Um, next thing on our agenda is, uh, application to rezone 301 and 307 North Star Street from R1 Low Density to R3 Multi-Family. Um, I'll introduce this topic, and then I'll step, step aside, I'll step out for a conflict of interest. This is a project in a rezone, just a client I, uh, work with and are associated with. So, Nick, I'll step aside, and you guys carry. Thank you. Scott?
NSRD Group is requesting a rezone from R1 Low Residential District to R3 Multi-Family District. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, um, on this requested rezone, April 28th. They voted six to, uh, six to zero to recommend approval of the rezone. With that, you should have minutes of the meeting in the packet, staff memos, and maps as well.
Ordinance number?
G1218.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve case number 16 dash 004 dash REZ, requesting a rezoning of 301 and 307 North Star, El Dorado, Kansas, to R3 Multiple Family Dwelling District be accepted, and that ordinance number G1218 be approved.
I'll second it. And that's Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Forgive me. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
None.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Badway?
Yes. Motion carries four, zero.
Next on our agenda is advisory board appointments, something that we spoke about in our work session last week. I think there's any changes to, to this from what we spoke about? Tabitha, is that correct?
Uh, actually, I'll let Brian take this one, because he is here tonight. Unless you need it.
Which one are we on?
Advisory Board.
Wake up, Brian.
At the May 10th, 2016 Special City Commission meeting, the commission reviewed renewal applications for the following applicants, Jim Holderman, Board of Zoning of Pills, Kevin Mulvaney, Board of Zoning of Pills, Brett Rensberg, Recreation Advisory Board, Commissioner Wilkinson as ex officio for Convention and Tourism, and Commissioner Lewis as ex officio for Solid Waste and Planning Committee.
Thank you. Any, this is, as we discussed in further comments, any questions from the board, from the commission?
Thank you to those folks, throwing their name in the hat, willing to serve. We appreciate that, and of course, Commissioner Wilkinson, Commissioner Lewis, on their willingness to jump on those boards as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we need to move to get Mr. Badway off first, right?
Commissioner Badway is on the Solid Waste Committee, so yes.
We need to revoke to remove.
Yes.
Well, I move to remove Commissioner Badway from the Butler County Solid Waste Planning Committee.
Second.
Okay, so we move to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're fired.
I'm so ashamed.
Okay, so I, that leaves a commission, that leaves an opening for Kinder Wilkinson to be, or, excuse me, Greg Lewis to be inserted.
I'm glad my mother didn't wait, wait to see that.
To that, so I'd entertain a motion for our appointments.
I move to approve the advisory board appointments as presented.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Um, next on our agenda is CIP, public hearing. Herb, who's gonna speak for this and for the staff? Okay?
Uh, back in December, we started the CIP process, that start, that starts our 2017 budget. It has gone before the Planning Commission, and has had several, um, public meetings available to the public, and now we come before you, just to give your blessing on the CIPs.
Okay.
And I'll just reemphasize, because I feel like last time we did this, this is us just adopting the plan.
Yes, yes.
And not, and not voting to accept everything that is in the CIP.
Correct. We will come before you on all of it.
Yeah.
And back up even a little more, it is a six-year capital improvement plan. So, for those people who don't know what CIP is, it's just a, a planning document that we use to help us plan for expenditures, capital expenditures for the next six years, and how we're gonna pay for them. And so, it starts that process of review.
And most of them are projects, and they will come before you again for approval.
If not in the budget, individually for a project.
Okay.
Ready for motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the 2017 to, uh, 2022 Capital Improvement Plan.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I believe there's a public hearing. Yeah, this is a public hearing.
Sorry. Okay, so, at, at this point, we'll open up for a public hearing. Anybody wish, from the, from the audience, wish to speak on the, on behalf of, or toward the capital improvement plan? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Now I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the 2000, or 2017 to 2022 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion?
I'd just say real quick, a special thank you to the Planning Commission, this, most of the agenda tonight, I mean, not only the CIP, but some of the other things we've voted on. Those folks put in a lot of work, and it obviously helps us, because we don't get, you know, this isn't a full-time job for us, and so those extra set, sets of ayes helps tremendously. So, thank you for all their work on everything that we've done tonight, and the CIP.
Okay. All right. Um, for the discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Um, new business discussion items, and we've got reports as well as, um, any new business at this time the commission would like to bring forward. Anything from the commission?
Is the report time, or?
Both. But, uh, why don't we start with reports, and then we'll come back with any new business? Commissioner Wilkinson, do you have?
Uh, new court advisory meets the first part of June, they only meet every other month.
Okay. Prairie Trails Advisory Board hasn't had a meeting since our last meeting, but, um, I've visited with some staff out there, uh, the New Greens are really coming in, I think they've mowed them twice now, and they are confident that first part of July, they're gonna be, they're gonna be open, so they look awful lush. So, I think it's really gonna, truly gonna be nice out there, and I think we're gonna get a lot more play.
You spoke of Inc. and housing last, last commission.
I did.
So, the only thing I can say is, I had lunch and supper at the Prairie Trails, and everybody needs to go out there, because that place is awesome.
And it is municipal.
Yes.
It is open to the public.
I like that.
Um, I would say, um, a couple of things that I have here, as Commissioner Lewis, I guess, alluded to, Inc., uh, they have, they met. alluded to, Inc., uh, they have, they met, haven't met yet, so I don't have a report from them necessarily. Main Street, we met today, and we talked about some, some fundraiser options, opportunities for Main Street that's associated with the Frontier Western Days coming up, so they're excited about that. I would say look forward to, look for the news, and look forward to that to come out, as a, a plan, some, uh, events ahead of the Frontier Western Days coming up. Uh, one thing I do want to say is, last week, we met, Reap, uh, Executive Director, uh, Executive, yeah, Executive Directors met last week, um, and, uh, the discussion there was regionalism, it still continues to be regionalism, is the focus on the, the Tin County area that's, that, uh, uh, that is important as far as the economic development region. Um, the, the bulk of what we talked about was encouraging everybody to use the, uh, the airport. They've done quite a bit towards, towards getting competitive fares in Southwest, as well as many other airlines are there, and they would appreciate, uh, paying attention to the new fares, new fare rates that are at the airport. And, uh, that's, you'll start seeing some, some plug for that as well. That's really the bulk of what came out of that meeting. Chase, we already had Youth Commission, they gave a report for you.
They did well.
You're very generous.
Um, any new business to be brought toward the commission, brought to our attention?
I just want to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day, uh, coming up, and have a safe holiday, and at our next meeting, I will be a new grandfather for the first time, so get ready to see some pictures. Because my wife bought a new camera today.
Hopefully, it softens you up a little bit.
Yeah. Don't hold your breath.
Okay. Um, I guess I would, I don't necessarily have any new business, um, to bring to the commission tonight, and we've got a full agenda coming ahead of us from this point forward, so I don't, I don't have anything to add from tonight's agenda. Okay? Good. Well, then, let's move on to City Manager's Report. Herb?
Mayor Hanes, we have a budget meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. I'm not sure that fits everyone's schedule, so if that's the case, I might recommend to the commission to consider other options.
Yes, I did, I have a conflict on that day, that is a Wednesday. Will the twenty-sixth work for people, and it's a Thursday?
I will be gone the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Can you do the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth?
I can do twenty-fourth.
Does that work? It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday, the twenty-fourth?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
I can't be here on the twenty-fourth. Just kidding.
All right, we'll meet without Nick on the twenty-fourth. No, let's move to work session.
I may, I may be in Hayes, just any day, so.
Skype in.
Don't, don't wait on me.
Skype, thank you. That's funny.
You know, I'm going to draw, just prove you wrong. You know, I know people know how to do that.
I know. Thank God for your wife.
I'll find some fourth grader in Hayes that knows how to do it.
I believe that.
Dad wanted me to go buy him a Thoway camera so one would film for this trip that we went on, and I just laughed and said, "Dad, I'm taking my phone. It'd be fine, and it's the, and it doesn't need to be developed."
Do.
And, uh, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Why don't you make fun of his dad?
Actually, I'm making fun of you. If you just get the phone that everybody wants you to have, you wouldn't need a camera either.
I don't want one of those.
He, he's down to the wire. Eventually, that phone, he's not going to have a choice.
Well, you know what? I have never butt dialed anybody with my phone. Can you say the same thing?
I can. I have a lot of numbers.
It'd be a lie.
Let's get back on topic. Anything further?
Nothing further. And I did want to mention, um, last week, we got notified that Tabitha has completed all the necessary training and time to become a certified.
Municipal clerk.
Municipal clerk, and, uh, it's something that if you're a city clerk, you work hard in five years, and lots of education continuing to add to get there, and, um, and so, she was awarded that honor last week, and we're real proud of her.
Yay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, nothing else on the City Manager's Report. Next on our agenda is executive session for legal matters. What, um?
Half an hour, you think, Scott? I think half an hour, maybe.
Okay, why don't we make it at, uh, back at eleven, excuse eleven.
Eleven.
Whoa, it's not the clock I'm looking at. We'll be back in session. Move that, we would, uh, we would propose that we would go into executive session until eight o'clock. I need a motion.
I move we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters and to reconvene in the commission room at eight P.M.
Second.
Okay, so move to second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. I'm tongue-tied a little bit today.